No problem. Great job.
Thank you. Should have asked you before. All right. It looks like everybody who wants, well, let me just double check. I think everybody who wants to log in has logged in. Yes. So, good morning, everybody. My name is Alan Lilly. This is, today is April 27, 2022. It's just after 10:00 a.m. I am the presiding hearing officer of the State Water Resources Control Board's Administrative Hearings Office, and this is a continuation of the hearing on the prosecution team's draft cease and desist order issued to Blue Triton Brands, Inc. And we're, we have a couple of preliminary matters, and then we will proceed with the Center for Biological Diversity's case. And I see, Ms. Grady, your hand is already up, so your electronic hand is up, so please go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Lilly. I just wanted to comment regarding the email correspondence that Mr. Lowe sent to the service list yesterday afternoon after the conclusion of his second round of testimony, in which he proffered additional comments regarding this matter. I am concerned that it seems that the non-party participants who have joined and who may not be familiar with these proceedings have turned what is a formal hearing into a virtual chat room and is creating an improper record. I do appreciate, Mr. Lilly, that you immediately notified all parties that you were moving that email to the policy statement section, but I would like to ask that you admonish the parties not to continue to engage in this type of fashion. Policy statements you provided in the notice, a time and place for that, and that has passed. You also provided time limits and a time and place for folks to testify. And Mr. Lowe, in particular, was allowed two opportunities to testify in this last proceeding, and sending an additional email is improper and unfair to all of the parties. Although he's not an attorney, all of us are human and may forget to say certain things that we want to, and it's improper and unfair for folks just to continue sending emails with additional thoughts and comments after the sworn testimony is closed and expanding the policy record beyond what's been invited. Thank you.
All right, your comment is noted, and just so everybody knows, we continue to get, we, the Administrative Hearings Office, frequently receives communications from non-parties about this matter, and we routinely turn those into PDF files and put them into the policy statement folder. So they're all there. That way, they're all on the record for everyone to read, and they're not evidentiary, so they are just treated as basically statements from interested parties. That's the State Water Board's process for allowing parties to submit comments, and we follow that process. I do agree, and I will say to all parties, please, don't, don't just start sending us things all the time. I had another hearing where this did sort of get out of hand. We are going to set a schedule for closing briefs, and I certainly expect the parties who've been participating in this hearing, whether represented by attorneys or not, to follow the page limits and deadlines for submitting closing briefs. So I don't, I think putting that in the, putting Mr. Lowe's email in the policy statement folder was the appropriate thing to do, but that's the way we'll proceed going forward. So, Mr. Lowe, I've already handled the email. Do you, I don't know if you have something else you need to say. Your hand is up, so go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say that I would have brought it up in my testimony, but you were pretty anxious to get through it quickly and not bring up new things. And I do feel like it's real important for everybody, including Blue Triton, to know where that is and how accessible it is and how wonderful it is. So your direction when I first started, and I listened really, really carefully, was that it was okay to send things to you, but anything, and to all the parties, as long as anything I sent to you went to everyone, all the parties. And so that, that was the direction. I listened very, very carefully, and this was something that I thought all the parties, including you, would like to know, so.
All right, well, I think it's been covered. I don't think we need to elaborate on it. I do, I absolutely do appreciate the fact that whenever you, Mr. Lowe, or anybody else sends anything to my office that you include everyone else on the service list. That, that addresses the ex-party rules, but that is still not an open invitation to tell me whatever your thoughts are of the day, and I'm not saying you did that. I understand. I was prodding you along pretty vigorously yesterday, and I do understand that. So I think we've taken care of that, but I do ask people, please don't submit stuff out of hand. I had another, another hearing pending where we started getting a lot of emails, and it was really sort of, I mean, I filed them all, made sure everyone saw them, so there were no issues with ex-party, but it, it can become burdensome and not really appropriate. So anyway, I think we've covered that. Mr. Silver, your hand was up, but it's not up anymore. Did you want to say something? You have to go off mute, though, if you do want to say something. What, okay, we can't, you're still on mute, so we can't hear you. I don't, yeah, I can't, there you go.
My hand is not intentionally up.
Okay. I could tell a story about how somebody at an auction accidentally bought a horse by waving their hand at the wrong time, but I won't. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Silver. That's fine. All right, there are three very quick corrections I want to do, or ask about corrections of testimony, and then we will get to Center for Biological Diversity. A first, oh, I don't, oh, yeah, that's Mr. Nichols. I see you're there. I'm going to ask Ms. Mullen to put up Exhibit B T B 38 and go to page seven. I was checking my notes yesterday, and I realized there were just a couple of things. I'm pretty sure these are typographical errors, but I just wanted the, the parties to confirm that. So if you could move to page seven, the very bottom of the page, Ms. Mullen, I would appreciate it, and make, just make it the last few lines bigger. One more notch bigger so that those of us with old eyes can read it. Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Nichols, are you there?
I am.
Okay, good. Sorry to bother you again, but I was reading this yesterday after we concluded the hearing. The line, the sentence that begins on line 24 says, "The type of hydrologic changes that might cause these features to disappear in East Twin Creek and West Fork City Creek between 1950 and 1953, 54 are not known to have occurred in that period." Was that 1950 supposed to be 1905?
You're correct.
Okay.
That should be 1905.
Okay, that's, and you are still under oath, just as a reminder, but I just wanted to double check that. Thank you. And then, Ms. Mullen, if you can put up Exhibit Low 3, I do have a similar one-word correction question for Mr. Lowe, and go to page nine. Oh, I'm sorry, wrong exhibit. My bad. Excuse me, Ms. Mullen. It's S O S 282. It's Mr. Lowe's other testimony. Had an extra hour to prepare this morning. You think I'd do better? Okay, and then just go to page nine, the bottom of the page. Okay, so, Mr. Lowe, the sentence that begins on line 22 on this page nine states, "Neither of these engineering exercises would have made little sense with the availability of water from Coldwater and Waterman Canyon." Should we delete, or did you intend to delete "little" there? It seems like you want to say neither of these engineering exercises would have made sense with the availability of water from Coldwater and Waterman Canyon. Is that correct? Uh-oh, I hope Mr. Lowe is still here.
He is, but he's on mute.
I am. I can't, I can't see number 22 on my screen.
Okay, let me read the sentence. It's.
Isn't it, isn't it on, can't we see it on the document?
Yeah, I don't know if it's, we have it displayed. It's Exhibit S O S 282, page nine.
Yeah, I see page nine, but all I can see on my screen is 25 and 24. Can we go up?
Can we scroll? Maybe we need to scroll. Gosh, it's at the very bottom of the page. Let's try scrolling down, Ms. Mullen, and see if it'll work better.
Okay, so we're starting on, on which number?
It's line 22.
Okay, I need to see up. All I can see is 24 and 25. I can't see above.
No, no, it's not, it's not paragraph 22.
Oh, oh, it's line.
It's paragraph 25, line 22.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not used to using those numbers. Okay, so let me read, let me read down.
Just read it out loud. It begins, "Neither of these."
Can I go up and start with "based upon," so I know what it says above it?
You don't need to. This is very simple.
Okay, okay, so we're in the sentence that says, "Neither of these engineering exercises," and what am I talking about there? "East Twin, considerably low elevation, would require pumping water uphill." Okay, "neither of these engineering exercises would have made sense," is what I meant to say there, "with the availability of water." Yeah, I didn't mean to say "little sense," I guess. It wouldn't have made sense.
All right, so we will delete "little" from that sentence.
It made sense, right.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Last, we have Ms. Frye. If you may take that exhibit down, Ms. Mullen. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Frye, you submitted, uploaded a revised version of your declaration, which we had labeled as F R 160, and we put that over into your exhibit folder for your exhibits and labeled it as F R 160 Revised. What, what is the change from F R 160 to F R 160 Revised?
I just added the word "not," where we, you know, you pointed out yesterday that there was that typo, so I.
Okay.
You know, so I thought maybe it's better to have the.
Okay, that's fine. We will leave both versions in, but the record is now clear. Is that the only change you made?
Right, that's the only change, and I put it in bold, so that's the only change.
All right, so for the record.
I made a little note at the end, okay, so.
Yeah, I can take care of it. Thank you. For the record, it's F R 160 on page seven, paragraph nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. In the ninth line, as edited by Ms. Frye, the sentence reads, "Mr. Nichols testified during cross-examination," there's a cite to footnote 35, "by Ms. Frye that he did not take vertical or horizontal core samples at or near spring diversion sites." So thank you. We will note for the record that we now have F R 160 Revised, and that's the only change. That, and Ms. Frye did testify to that yesterday. So that takes care of those preliminary matters, and with that, we will move on to a Center for Biological Diversity. And Ms. Palenki, so Ms. Palenki, I do not believe that you previously made an opening statement. We don't normally allow opening statements in the rebuttal phase, but you don't, and you certainly don't have to, but if you want to give a brief opening statement, just a couple of minutes long maximum, I will allow you to do so. Otherwise, we can just proceed directly with the testimony of Mr. Zidane.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. We don't need to provide an opening statement today. We'll provide in our briefing.
Okay, thank, thank you. And I'm going to try to follow my own directions and not talk while somebody else is talking. I apologize. All right, so, Ms., and first of all, Mr. Zidane, am I pronouncing your last name correctly?
Perfect.
Okay, that's good and rare for me. Please raise your right hand, your real right hand, not your virtual one. Do you swear that the testimony you will be giving in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And with that, Ms. Palenki, I'll go ahead and allow you to, well, I'll just ask the first question. Mr. Zidane, is Exhibit C B D 1 your testimony for this hearing?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And with that, Ms. Palenki, I will give you a maximum of 15 minutes to ask Mr. Zidane questions for him to summarize his testimony. And I do see that Exhibit C B D 10 is basically two slides for summarizing his testimony, so you may proceed.
Before she does, can we make sure we get Mr. Zidane's full name and spelling on the record?
Yes, that would be a good idea. Thank you, Ms. Dy. So, Mr. Zidane, please state your name, first and last name clearly, and then spell your last name slowly for the record.
Andrew Zidane, A N D R E W Z D O N.
Thank you. All right, and with that, Ms. Palenki, you may proceed.
Yes, I think if we could put up the C B D 10, which are the summary slides, Mr. Zidane is prepared to go through them, walk through them with a summary of his testimony, beginning with his credentials and discussing his testimony.
All right, Ms. Mullen has posted Exhibit C B D 10. We are on page one. Please let us know how you would like us to scroll down.
I think we can go down a page.
Okay, we now have, and Mr. Zidane, just so you know, I say all this stuff even though you can see it, just so our transcript is clear, but we now have Exhibit C B D 10, page two on the screen. Go ahead.
So my name is Andrew Zidane. I'm a California professional geologist, certified hydrogeologist, and certified engineering geologist. I'm a graduate of Northern Arizona University. I have a bachelor's science in geology. I also took some additional graduate courses at Cal State LA in hydrogeology and engineering geology, and actually taught a course as an instructor at Cal State LA in groundwater modeling and management back in the 1990s. I've been studying, I've been working in the field for 34 years now, and the last 15 years or so have been really with a focus towards spring systems around the Southwest, largely in eastern California, but extending into Nevada and, and most recently into western Utah. Back in 2015 to 16, we did a spring survey on behalf of the U.S. Bureau of Land Management that encompassed the entire Mojave Desert, extending from Mono County down to Imperial County, and we've been doing a lot of work beyond that, including on the north slope of the San Bernardino Mountains and the east slope of the San Bernardino Mountains. Although I haven't done work specifically in Strawberry Creek watershed on that, on the south front of the San Bernardino Mountains. I'm familiar with the area, grew up in southern California, spent much time going up Old Waterman Canyon Road, so I am familiar with the, that general topography, geomorphology, and geology. As far as reviewing the documents, if I can look down to a list, or should I go through the actual list, or just summarize?
Mr. Zidane, I have read both your resume, which is Exhibit C B D 2, and I've read the details in, of your testimony in C B D 1, so I don't think it's necessary to go into a lot more background. I think the summary, you can just proceed with the summary of what you did for this matter and what your conclusions were.
Terrific. Yeah, so I reviewed documents, going back to Rowe's early work, all the way up through the most recent Haley Altridge work, including, in between, including those of Mann and Hydrodynamics Group and, and Damesamore. And overall, if we can go to the next slide.
And just so we're clear, Mr., before we do that, it's, it's actually Haley Altridge, not Hadley Altridge, the way it's written on slide two.
Yeah, I thought that's right. Okay.
Yeah, it's just, okay, it was just a typo, but go ahead.
Okay. So I think there's really clear evidence that there, there have been springs historically in the watershed. They were described by Rowe. They, they're talked about all the way through by Damesamore. Hydrodynamics Group discusses naturally occurring springs, and I have personal experience working alongside Hydrodynamics Group. We both work on spring systems in Inyo County related to potential effects of the proposed Yucca Mount Nuclear Waste Repository on Springs in, in Inyo County. And furthermore, all of this work and development would not have happened without the presence of springs being, being there. As far as baseline data goes, really, because of the changes that have happened to the system historically, really, Rowe, the Rowe data provides the only glimpse into pre-development conditions and provides the, really, the best baseline data that we have to rely on. So what happens to springs when you, when you change a system? Well, overall, in spring systems, or in any walk, in a watershed, prior to development, you'll have a certain amount of water going in and a certain amount of water going out, and those will be in balance. And in that balance, there are some waters that are going to be discharged as springs. Some of that water that discharges as springs seeps back down into the ground and continues down the watershed. Some of it will evaporate. See, when you change the system, though, you're also changing, especially in fractured rock, you're, you're changing the, the flow pattern. You're creating preferential pathways. And so, in fact, it'll start to act as a drain on the system. We see this in springs throughout. I mean, this is, this is really common, not just in the watershed for gathering water, for, for bottling or other uses. I mean, it's used for other things for livestock. It's actually, more springs are, are developed this way than are left natural. But they do change the system. We've seen this all over and throughout the areas that we've been studying. In fact, using similar drain systems like horizontal boreholes or, or horizontal wells is a common way of dewatering hillsides. I mean, it's, it's used in geotechnical purposes. Typically, you'll install horizontal boreholes along the toe of a landslide to stabilize it, to drain off the, the water that is lubricating a landslide surface. So you do get changes up gradient as a result of, of doing these drain activities. So in this case, given the water gather, gathering, the development of the tunnels and the horizontal boreholes, that would alter the flow regime, and it would be, what we see now would be different than what you would see prior to 1930. With respect to the hydraulic testing that was done, again, it's important to recognize that we're doing hydraulic testing, excuse me, in an altered system. Let me get a drink of water here real quick.
All this talk of water makes us thirsty, so go ahead.
Yeah. So, so we're, you're doing this testing on an altered system, and you're actually testing a form of permeability that didn't exist prior to development. And so you're really almost testing a feature more than you're testing the surrounding hydraulics of the, the mass of the watershed. So what we're looking at for each test, what you're looking at is a very localized condition. And so it's a, in my view, it's a bit of a stretch to expand the assumptions of what you see in one of those, I think they're called, they were calling them shut-in tests on the fractured bedrock as a whole. So as far as what you see in those, in those tests, and then extrapolating those back as to what that would have, what the implications of the, of what you see in those tests would have been under pre-development conditions, I don't think is, is a valid way of looking at those. Next, can we go to the next slide?
We'll go to page three of Exhibit C B D 10. Please proceed.
So as I mentioned before, what will happen with the spring discharge is that a portion of that discharge, while some of it will get used by plants or just evaporate directly, a portion of that will then discharge back into the, either surface flow to the creek or it'll go back into the stream bed, where it'll be underflow along the stream bed, where it can surface again downstream, where there are constrictions to flow either through shallow bedrock or just other landforms that, that cause water back to surface again. And actually, each of, where water then surfaces in the channel themselves is actually a form of spring that, that rises in the canyon bottom. And so when you capture those springs, so, you know, if we look at pre-development conditions that was taking place post-development, you're taking a volume of water that formerly was feeding that, that system, and you're diverting that around. So you are, you're changing the, the water budget essentially of the watershed. You introduce essentially a new stress on the system, and so whatever you are capturing in that capture system for development is now not flowing through the natural system downstream. It's being bypassed. So that is being extracted from the water budget of the canyon itself, which then would have, would affect either downstream springs or stream flow to the extent of what I've seen. I don't know that you can make assumptions one way or the other, how, to what extent that has occurred. There is really substantial data that Haley Altridge has collected from 2016 on in the, in the watershed itself, but there's really nothing to compare that to, and certainly not pre-development, as the work from Rowe is pretty, pretty limited. So it would be because of that, though, we do know that there is less water flowing through the system, and there would be somewhere, when you're, when you make, when you introduce new stresses to that water budget, there have to be adjustments to those outflow components, whether it's reduced spring flow or reduced evapotranspiration from plants, or reduced underflow out of the system downstream. Those will then have to readjust to create a new equilibrium condition. So it would be, it would be, what's the word I'm trying to think of? Excuse me, I'm having a senior moment. It would be unusual not to see changes as a result of those, those kinds of diversions. So, you know, that's kind of a summary of what my comments in my testimony are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zidane. I don't have any additional questions at this time, Mr. Lilly.
All right, well, thank you, both Mr. Zidane and Ms. Palenki. So does anybody have any cross-examination questions that they would like to ask Ms. Zidane? And I'm. Miss Zidane, and I'm, I see Mr. Sanders' real hand up. And anybody, uh, Mr. Lowe's electronic hand. And any, does anybody else want to ask questions? All right, so I'm going to, and miss, thank you, Mr. Lowe, you may go ahead and put your electronic hand down. Um, so I think I'll proceed, I'll have Mr. Lowe ask his questions first because that potentially, Mr. Sanders may, that may prompt some additional questions for Mr. Sanders, so I think it'll be more efficient to do it that way. So, Mr. Lowe, um, it's, I don't know, um, how many minutes you have anticipated. I, I'd like you to, to do this in fifteen minutes or less if possible. Uh, but please go ahead with your questioning. And go off mute first. There we go. You're off mute. It's ten thirty-two. Please go ahead with your cross, cross-examination questions. And if you want us to put up any of the exhibits on the screen, just let us know.
No, I don't think so. I, is it Zidane? Is that how we pronounce your name?
Yep, that's it.
Zidane. Okay. So, uh, you haven't been involved, but I've studied this a whole lot, so I'm gonna ask you some questions to see if you confirm what I've been learning.
Okay, and just a reminder, Mr. Lowe, keep it as questions, not statements from you, but questions from Mr. Zidane.
Right. Okay, so based on the row notes, it doesn't appear that there's been a big increase in water diverted after development. Is that?
Uh, I'm not, I don't think that's a very clear question.
Okay, I'll try to, I'll try to make it.
I, I, I wanna make sure that Mr. Zidane is testifying as to things he actually reviewed and that you're asking him about his testimony. Please, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Let, let me rethink in light of that. Let me just have a second here to rethink what I'm asking.
As I've said before, Mr. Mr. Lowe, if it's more than about ten words long, it's probably too long. Questions should be very short, to the point, not a lot of introductory statements.
Okay. So, Mr. Zidane, did you say that, um, the Springs were visible and that they, um, were looking for the water that was coming from those natural springs when they developed the tunnels? One, I mean tunnels three and tunnel two and tunnel seven?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Did you get a chance to look at the row flow measurements for those Springs prior to and after development?
Uh, I'd have to, yeah, I did, but I, I would, you know, to go into the details, I'd have to go back and refer to them.
Okay. Um, in your opinion, uh, boreholes have a much greater chance of increasing flows, especially when they're deep.
Wait, 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 just, just ask him a question. Do, is it your opinion that boreholes, just ask it that way?
Okay, I'm sorry. Is it your opinion that boreholes, especially deep boreholes, um, are accessing a lot more water than is normally done with a tunnel at a spring development?
Objection goes beyond the testimony, and I'm not actually sure what the question is.
Wait, no. Um, Ms. Belenke, we, we do allow some uh, questioning beyond the exact scope of the testimony. This is government code eleven five one three subdivision E. Um, it's, we're, we're into rebuttal phase, so I'm trying to keep it more limited, but, but I think that's an appropriate question. So I'm going to allow the question. So, Mr. Zidane, do you need the question repeated or is it clear to you?
I, I think I know where that's going, but it'd be.
Okay, I, I'm gonna just state the question. The question is, do deep boreholes have the potential to develop more water than shorter tunnels?
They can, um, that, in fact, that's um, I think usually the purpose of doing that, um, in is to enhance the flow of the spring. It's twofold really to enhance the flow of the spring and, you know, ease the ability to capture that flow. Um, what can happen, you know, one of the things that we see a lot, and particularly more in desert areas, is that that can also result in decreased flows over time. Um, as that storage is more, as that enhanced flow happens, um, you know, more water comes out of the system that maybe can recover that. If, if, if that, if there's more water coming in or more water flowing out, um, that could also mean that water is being induced to flow towards the system from elsewhere where that wasn't a contribute, a contributor before.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowe, you may proceed, but, and again, please try to just keep it as succinct questions.
Okay, thanks. Did you notice the borehole diagrams and discussions of water that was encountered in the various depths? Did you get a chance to look at that?
Um, I reviewed that again, but I, on in, on individual basis is, I'd have to go back and look at that.
Okay, thanks. Um, you, based on what you reviewed, you agree that the Springs that were developed eventually were all flowing good on the surface before they were developed?
Uh, yes, flowing as, you know, as was reported, yes.
Yes. I think you discussed it, but I wanna make sure can piezometers describe a fractured rock system such as this? And where the original Springs were developed and the pathways? Uh, does it glimp, give, do they give any glimpse into the past?
Uh, no, they're, 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 um, what you measure in a piezometer is based on the conditions at that point in time that the piezometer is in place.
From what I could tell, do you agree that the piezometers were put in what existing surface moisture there was still available on the site?
And, and Mr. Lowe, um, I, I know you're trying to the best you can, but there, there were several different piezometers, or there are several different piezometers here, and I, I, I think his, you, you're going to need to split it up. I know we've talked about the piezometers near uh, the sites of Springs ten, eleven and twelve. Um, I know there were, at least, there's at least one or maybe two piezometers up at the Forest Service Spring. I think there were some piezometers near Spring Four, if my recollection is right. So I, I think you're gonna have to be specific as to which piezometers you wanna ask him about.
Okay, I, I think he's discussed it well enough in his, in his, um, testimony, I think, so.
Okay. I think so too. So I, I, I'm not sure you need to ask anything more about that. I mean, frankly, his testimony is, is very clear.
Right. What is your opinion on the length of time it would take to rewater? Um, the, the spring areas i- in general and the downstream Springs to get back to natural conditions?
Objection, this is outside of the scope of testimony.
Um, yeah, Mr. Lowe, I'm gonna sustain the objection because it assumes facts not in evidence. I mean, Mr. Zidane testified that it's an altered condition. And basically, even if all the diversions were to stop, it would not go back to the pre-development natural conditions. And I think your question assumed that it would. So I, I'm gonna sustain the objection. I think it's, it's an improper question, and I don't know if it's beyond the scope of his testimony, but it assumes facts that are contrary to what he testified to.
Okay. Let me try it, and, and another way. The turnout flows that were turned in, there were turned out, how long would it take those to rewater the system that they affect?
Um, I, I'm gonna try to help, I'm gonna sustain the objection, the, I think the question is vague. Um, I, maybe I'm gonna try to help you, Mr. Lowe here, and if, if I get an objection or if Mr. Zidane tells me that my question doesn't make sense, that's fine, and we'll move on. But I, I'm just gonna say in general, Mr. Zidane, do you have any opinion regarding the length, the, the time duration of the turnout tests that Haley and Aldrich conducted? And whether it would be, that you would see different results if they had been for longer lengths of time?
Um, you, you know, that, I, I, I can't have an opinion about, um, whether there was a change if it wasn't done. So it's fractured rock systems are, are very complex. And so whether there is, sometimes you'll be, can be running tests and things will seem to be at an equilibrium and all of a sudden, a, a, a boundary condition will show itself. So I really can't answer that. I, I don't have an answer for that.
All right, well, yeah, thank you for being candid. Maybe my question wasn't very good. So with that, Mr. Lowe, uh, you may proceed. I, I think you've covered the length of the turnout test, but if you have other questions, please proceed.
I think I'm fine, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowe. Um, all right, so Mr. Sanders, you, uh, had your hand raised before. You may proceed with your cross-examination. I, I, I'm, I'm gonna allow fifteen minutes, and if you need more, we'll, we'll kind of see where we are. You can give an offer of proof, but the Mr. Zidane's testimony has been pretty limited, so I'm, I'm hoping cross-examination won't have to take an, an, an inordinate amount of time. But, but anyway, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly, and I, I anticipate the cross-exam will not exceed fifteen minutes.
All right, please proceed, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Zidane. My name is Chris. Excuse me, my name is Chris Sanders, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Ellison, Schneider, Harrison, Donlan. And I'm here today representing Glutriton Brands. I'm going to ask you questions based on your written and oral testimony. Most of my questions will require you to respond yes or no. Um, as you may or may not know, there is a court reporter here who is transcribing the record. Um, so please be sure to provide a clear verbal response rather than nodding or shaking your head.
And, and Mr. Sanders, I'm gonna admonish you regarding the court reporter. Slow it down about eighty percent and make sure you're, you're sometimes tailing off at the end of your question, so please try to slow it down a little bit and speak clearly all the way to the end, so we can all hear you. Thank you.
I will, I will, uh, follow my own, uh, advice and yours.
It's a good thing to do.
Uh, Mr. Zidane, I, I believe you testified, um, just a few minutes ago that you have not visited the sites of the natural Springs in Strawberry Canyon, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in your testimony, you indicate that Springs have historically been present in the Strawberry Creek watershed, is that correct?
Yes.
And did you rely on reports from the hydrodynamics group as the basis for your opinion regarding the locations of Springs?
That was one of the reports, yes.
Did you also rely on reports from Dames and Moore?
Yes.
As the basis?
I'm sorry.
But it's a, it, my apologies, and I, I don't, we've, we've had issues about talking over people, and I will try my best not to do so.
Well, and Mr. Zidane, you've clearly testified many times before, but we will remind you the court reporter can only take down one person at a time, so let Mr. Sanders finish his question, count to three, and then respond, and he will do the same, or I will remind him to. So please go ahead.
Did the hydrodynamics group or Dames and Moore visit the spring locations prior to development?
Uh, yes.
So the Dames and Moore and hydrodynamics group, they were both on site prior to nineteen thirty?
Oh, right, no.
Thank you. Do you know what the basis of their statements was regarding spring locations?
Uh, previous work and, and their own, their own work?
Could the basis, uh, um, did any of the reports you reviewed cite to survey coordinates for the spring sites for the period prior to development?
I believe so, but I have to go back and look.
Um, do you have any belief that there is it, uh, there is a citation to that um, location information? If, do you know a specific site that you're referring to?
Yes, a specific reference? I'm not sure.
I'm sorry.
I would have to go back and, and look again, but it seems to me I do recall seeing a table of locations.
With, with, um, specific coordinates?
Yes.
But at this time, can you provide me any indication of where that document is?
I'd have to look, not at this point, I, that, as I said here, I couldn't.
Okay, thank you. Um, could the basis of the opinions provided by Dames and Moore or the hydrodynamics group regarding spring locations be based solely on oral history?
Can you repeat that question, please?
Sure. Could the basis of the opinions provided by Dames and Moore or the hydrodynamics group regarding spring locations be based on oral history?
Objection calls for speculation.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna sustain that objection. I, Mr. Sanders, I, you know, he's read the reports, they're in the record. We can all read the reports and they say whatever they say. So I, I think this is something that's really more appropriate for your, uh, closing brief. Uh, it, it doesn't seem to be something that gets into any specialized knowledge that Mr. Zidane has. Rather, it's rather just review of the records, which any of us can do just as well. So the objection is sustained.
In your review of the row documents, did Roe identify when development occurred precisely?
Um, I believe there's more of a range of time in between measurements.
And when he indicated a flow measurement, did he indicate whether that was pre-development or post-development?
When, when talking about measurements from a tunnel, that would be post-development. Um, as far as the initial spring flow, that would have been pre-development. So that would have been pre able to, to identify that there's development or development going to happen.
Did he indicate when, when he took samples, did he indicate whether other than from the flow from a tunnel, did he indicate how that flow was collected? So that you would know whether it was pre-development or post-development?
Objection Vegas to location.
Um, I'm gonna sustain the objection, I think. I, I, and again, Mr. Sanders, I, we can all read the reports. Um, so unless this question relates to Mr. Zidane's specific testimony, I'm not sure it's relevant. Uh, but if you think it does, then please restate the question, but be specific as to the location you're asking about.
I will do so. He, he testified earlier, if I'm not mistaken, that he reviewed both pre-development and post-development flows. So my question is. How do you know? When a. A, a flow number was pre-development or post-development that Roe reported?
Okay, and that's a perfectly appropriate question. So go ahead, Mr. Zidane, you may answer that question.
What I was referring to was that the earlier, the earliest, uh, 1930 row data that was collected. Would have been. Most representative of pre-development flow, considering the amount of development that has happened since that timeframe, so that really is providing you the best you have. Um, it is, you can also note though, that, uh, the way those, a lot of those flows were measured, he would install weirs, which in and of themselves. Ha, can have an effect on, on the flow system, so. They are the best that we have to, to evaluate what those pre-development flows are. Um, on the system.
Okay. Um, please bring up CBD one, page three.
All right, Ms. Mullen, please, uh, just display exhibit CBD one and scroll to page three. And Mr. Sanders, just let us know where on page three you want us to scroll to?
Sure, um, line 26, please.
Okay, and just so we're clear. This is PDF page three, which is text page two. And we're scrolled down to, so paragraph seven, we're down to line 20.
Go ahead.
Correct.
Um. Mr. Zidane, um, please read the sentence that begins, man, 1988 on line 26.
Um, okay, let me, I gotta change my screen a little bit here, so I can see the whole thing. Hold on. Man, 1988 noted the natural springs, um, and that's, I give the reference, and concluded. That Strawberry Creek is tributary to the springs.
Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Is Strawberry Creek tributary to the springs?
Uh, it would be, um, as, uh, as the springs discharge, they're discharging water to the system. That would be part of Strawberry Creek.
Okay. Um. Can you show me where in PT 31, page 87, that man concluded that the springs? That the Strawberry Creek is tributary to the springs?
Uh, yeah. We can post, uh, we can, it'll just take us a moment, but. Um, let's go ahead and, Ms. Mullen, please. Um, if you can screen share for exhibit PT 31 and go to page 87. Okay. So we want to go ahead and scroll, scroll down, and Mr. Zidane, tell us where. On this page you'd like us to refer to, if you can.
And can we, uh? Can we scroll down again? Okay, I'll scroll down. It's, I think it's further back in there. Is there more pages here?
We can scroll to the next page.
Yeah, the script.
I mean, there, his signature is here, so I don't know if there's more pages. I don't know whether they're attachments or not, but let's go to the next page and see. Okay, this then has notes on, and just scroll down a little bit, Ms. Mullen, if we can see who wrote this. Okay, so I, I don't know, the next page just has notes, and we're just not clear who wrote that. I don't know whether it's by Mr. Mann or somebody else, but. Um. If you can, Mr. Zidane, go ahead and. And answer the question.
Okay, well, on what was shown on there. What I saw was on. Either following pages. Or there's a, a mistake on the reference.
So at this time, you can't tell me. Where man made that conclusion?
It's, it's not on that page. I'd have to look that up.
Thank you.
I'm objecting because I don't believe that Blue Triton is showing Mr. Zidane the correct reference document.
Um, that objection is overruled. It's, we have posted the citation that is in Mr. Zidane's testimony. It very clearly says PT 31. On page 87. Now, he has just testified that that may not be correct, and he would have to check beyond that, so, which I understand, but the objection is overruled.
Can we go back to, um, CBD one, page four?
Okay, we will post CBD one, and this is PDF page four, which would be text page three, and let's know which paragraph you'd like us to go to.
Sure, in paragraph 10 on line 25, please. Um, Mr. Zidane, can you please read, um, the sentence that begins? On line 25 with waters discharged. From undeveloped springs?
Waters discharged from undeveloped springs will typically. A evaporate or be transpired by vegetation. B seep back into the subsurface contributing to underflow of streams down channel or basin storage. Or C will contribute to surface flow of streams under gaining conditions.
Thank you. So is your testimony that possibilities for spring water discharge include evaporation, transpiration by vegetation, or contribution to basin storage?
Yes.
Can you please read the first sentence of paragraph 10 on page four of CBD one that begins with. Additionally, just the, the first sentence of that paragraph. Additionally, waters captured?
Additionally, waters captured by the existing infrastructure. And piped down canyon are waters that previously would have otherwise remained in the Strawberry Creek watershed hydrologic regime. Supplementing spring flow or base flow to Strawberry Creek.
Does that in, does that statement include the possibilities for spring water discharge of evaporation? Transpiration by vegetation or contribution to basin storage?
Yes.
How so?
Well, that, that's how the system is, is maintaining itself. So water is coming in from precipitation. As an inflow. Um, and moving downstream, some of it is, is, um, discharging as springs, some of it is transpired or evaporated, some of it goes back into. Uh, the subsurface seeps back in where it made, uh, rise to the surface again downstream. Um.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um. Is it your testimony that stable isotop results presented by Haley and Aldrich are anomalous? In that such large portions of the data fall substantially above the global meteor, meteoric, meteoric waterline?
They're very different than what I've seen. Although I have been working on the north slope and the east slope of the San Bernardino's, but they are very different, not kind of unusual. They can represent a local meteoric waterline. But typically, if I saw that, that would be just something that I would want to have the lab. Uh, reanalyze because it. Given the, the consistency of where that, those data plot. Um, there is the potential for some, a systematic error in the lab. That would be like from, from a piece of calibration of an instrument. It, I don't think it would be from. Field sampling, because typically. The, uh, the result, the, the. The effect on, on field sampling is usually that you end up with more evaporated waters, and it would actually be a problem in the, in the other direction. So I would suspect if there was, it, it may be real, but it would be something that I would go back and recheck.
Okay. Um. Can we bring up CBD one, page eight?
All right, we will move to. CBD one, this is PDF page eight, text page seven, and we have paragraph 17 on the screen now.
Um. In paragraph 17, beginning on line six, can you please read that sentence?
Kendall and McDonald, 1998, a standard reference for the use of isotop, isotop tracers notes, quote, for water samples immediately. I think I have a typo there, but immediately plot the data on. Uh, Delta D and Delta O 18 diagram outliers, especially ones that plot appreciably above the global meteoric waterline. Should be viewed with skepticism and possibly reanalyzed. Kendall McDonald, page 77.
Is that an accurate quote from Kendall and McDonald?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Can, can we please have CBD nine, page two brought up?
All right, we will post. CBD nine, page two. Do you want us to scroll down?
Scroll down, please. Yeah, the last paragraph of this page. Um, Mr. Zidane, did you quote from the bottom paragraph of this page?
Yes.
Did you omit a parenthetical that included a reference to figure 2.7?
Uh, yes, that's not in there. Yeah.
Does figure 2.7 show any lines that plot above the global meteor, meteoric waterline?
Uh, let me, can I? I have the reference behind me. I can look, uh, if you would like me to look. I don't recall figure 2.7.
I, I can bring it up. Um, Mr. Lilly, we would like to bring up, uh, BTB 41. That was posted this morning.
Okay, uh, why don't we do this? Um, let's see how fast we can get. Did you, you uploaded it to, um?
We did, and we can, we can email it to all of the parties.
Objection to the extent that the parties are supposed to be notified whenever anything is uploaded, and we were not notified.
All right, let's, first of all, let's, th- that objection is overruled. Uh, we. We do allow impeachment exhibits, which are not subject to the. Normal rules for filing exhibits, but let's first of all see. If we have it here, I want to just see. If we have it. Okay, yes, we do have it. So I'm gonna try, this is always dangerous, but let me try to. Move it over. To, and then I, if, if I can do this, then we will, um, take a break and let everybody take a look at it. This is. They normally don't let me do this because I'm prone to make mistakes. And I think I can pull this one off. Paste. Okay, so why doesn't somebody check? And see, now, it should, it should now be in the FTP folder for the Blue Triton Brands Exhibits. Uh, BTB 41. Um. So let's see, Ms. Belenky, why don't you see, can you, can you access that FTP folder right now?
Um, I can try. Hold on a second.
I mean, otherwise, we can have, uh, somebody email it, if you can get it, that's. Well, I'll tell you what, while you're doing that, uh, Mr. Anderson or Mr. Woldridge, can one of you just, I, I have now. Moved it over to the BTB exhibit file. Can one of you just email that to the? Um, BTB hearing service list, please?
Mr. Lilly, I was able to open it from the folder just now.
Okay. Um, thank you, Ms. Gray. Uh, I'm glad my technology skills are not hopeless. They're, they're, they're at least passable. Um. So, I don't know, Ms. Belenky, are you able to access it yet?
I'm just getting there. Sorry, I don't have the fastest internet. It wasn't, I didn't have the folder open. Um.
And Mr. Zidane, do you have this exhibit yet?
Uh, would it come via email?
Well, no, it's not. Maybe we can just.
I can look in the book. I have it right behind me.
That's, that's gonna be the old-fashioned way, which is probably the most reliable. So it looks like.
Well, Mr. Lilly.
It's page. Well, I don't know, you can find, mine just shows it as figure 2.7. I don't see a page number on that. Why don't you see if you can get it from the book? And Ms. Belenky, can you get it?
Yeah, I'll be there in a second.
Yes, I found, I opened BTB 41, and I should be able to.
It's just one page, so hopefully it'll load fairly fast.
Yep, I've got it.
Okay, Ms. Belenky, do you have it?
I do, yes.
All right, so that was a little. In the old days, we used to hand out paper copies, because we're all in the room together, so we have just done the. The new version of that. So with that, Mr. Sanders, go ahead and ask your question about. What has now been marked as exhibit BTB 41.
Can we bring up figure 2.7?
Or, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll screen share it here. That's, then we, we'll all have it. Thank you, that'll help.
Okay.
So, Ms. Mullen, if you can please screen share now exhibit BTB 41. All right. Our technology is not bad, I'll say, so. Um. Okay, so I guess we don't need to email it. At least the key parties have it, and it is in the folder now. So. And now, if, maybe you can just notch it one notch smaller, Ms. Mullen, so we can read the whole thing. Hopefully it'll still be legible. Okay, that's good enough. All right, so now, Mr. Sanders, go ahead and ask your question.
Sure, is, um, let's start with, is BTB 41? Um, which depicts figure 2.7 from the Kendall and McDonald report that you cite as CBD nine?
Yeah.
Okay. Does figure 2.7 show a line that plots above the global meteoric waterline?
Yes, it does.
Does the caption for figure 2.7 describe this line?
I, I guess.
Please read the last two sentences of the caption for figure 2.7.
Uh, starting from, when, when the.
Yeah, when, when the evaporate?
When the evaporate, uh. Delta E mixes with the local atmospheric vapor, a new vapor is formed that plots above the New York waterline.
Wait, wait, Mr., wait, wait, Mr. Zidane, just because you're reading, you can't go fast. Just sorry, now, please.
Okay. If rain later condenses from this vapor, it would plot along a new line, parallel to the meteoric waterline. But with higher deuterium excess, D excess value.
Thank you. Does this line? Reflect precipitation from local atmospheric vapor?
Yes.
Is that line the, the result of local atmospheric vapor that later becomes rain?
Yes.
Does the line plot appreciably above the global meteoric line?
Yes, it does.
Is it true that local precipitation may plot above the global meteoric waterline as stated by Kendall and McDonald?
It can.
Thank you. Um. Can we bring up CBD one? Page seven, please.
Right. We will go to CBD one, page seven, text page six. And let us know where you'd like us to scroll to, Mr. Sanders.
Um, paragraph 15, lines nine through 10.
All right.
And, and Mr. Zidane, you mentioned the use of explosive is commonly used for tunneling underground. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yes.
What is your experience in tunnel construction?
Uh. Early in my career, I worked in mining and I did a lot of underground work. So we did a lot of, uh, sampling of underground tunnels that were. Uh. Eventually reaching the saturated zone that had to be dewatered. Um. And just the commonly used practices in mining, which parallel. Um, or are similar to tunneling for. Um, in, uh, other purposes.
Thank you. Were, were explosives typically used for development of water tunnels in the nineteen thirties?
Um, for fracturing rock and making them easy to dig, I, I. It, it very well could be. I don't have a specific, uh, example to present.
Do you have any evidence of whether, um, explosives were used in BTB's tunnels?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lilly, might I have a moment? To confer with my colleagues? I believe that I've concluded, but I just want to, to verify.
Please take a minute. That's fine. We'll, we'll just stand by here. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Lilly, I believe that concludes our cross-examination of Mr. Zidane.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanders. Uh, Ms. Doty, your hand this up. Do you want to ask cross-examination questions now?
Um, perhaps, but I was going to ask for a, a, just a break.
All right, so let, let's just, um. Get a, I wanted to get a little time check here. Are you going to then potentially ask cross-examination questions?
Um, potentially, yes, I, maybe five minutes.
All right, and does anybody else have any, uh? Uh, questions, cross-examination questions they're going to want to ask Mr. Zidane? Ms. Grady?
Yeah, we would just want to ask if Ms. Doty or the other council has spoken with Mr. Zidane during the break.
Okay, why don't, oh, oh, during the break. Okay, that's, that's certainly a reasonable question. As long as you have Mr. Sanders ask it, I'd rather. Just have it be one attorney per party asking questions, but Mr. Sanders certainly can ask that at the end of the break. Um, all right, and then Ms. Belenki, do you think you're going to have any redirect?
Yes, a few questions.
All right, so let's, it's, it's, we started a little later than usual, but let's go ahead and take. A morning break here, uh, for ten minutes. We'll come back at eleven twenty-five, and just as a reminder, don't log off, but you can. Turn off your camera and your microphone. So eleven twenty-five, we will return. All right, we're just waiting for Ms. Doty and Ms. Belenki. And Mr. Zidane. Hopefully, Mr. Zidane and Mr. Ms. Belenki will show up soon. There's Mr. Zidane. We just need Ms. Belenki, we can get started. I hope Ms. Belenki is not having technical problems. She's, her tile is still here, but. No video or audio. It's not on my screen. All right, we now have Ms. Belenki. So Ms. Doty. Uh, we've now taken a break. Do you want to ask any cross-examination questions of Mr. Zidane?
Mr. Lilly, if I may, real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
Um, I, I'd like to ask Mr. Zidane if he had any communications with anyone during the break, and if so, whom?
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Zidane, you may answer that question.
Yes, I just spoke, uh, for a minute with, uh, Lisa Belenki.
Were you?
A minute ago.
Um, were you provided any direction on how to testify?
No.
Um. And Mr. Lilly, I'd like to reserve the right to further cross, um, because Ms. Doty did not indicate an intent to cross. Uh, Mr. Zidane originally.
Right, I, I think that's fine. So, uh. If, if, after, we haven't even found out from Ms. Doty whether or not she's going to ask any questions, but if she does. And you believe that you have something else that you want to cover. Based on her, her questioning, then that will be fine. So Ms. Doty, do you want to ask Mr. Zidane any questions?
I do.
All right, go ahead.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Zidane.
Morning.
Uh, could you tell me, please, what is your opinion of Dames and Moore? Assigned.
Uh, Dames and Moore was a, a leading firm, um. Back in the day, they were one of firms, along with a firm that I formerly worked with, Woodward Clyde Consultants. That were swallowed up, uh, by another firm called URS, uh, back in the nineties. But they, uh, were widely recognized as one of the leading, uh, engineering and geology firms.
And then, um, I'm going to ask you another couple of questions. If it's beyond the scope of what you reviewed, just please let me know that and you need not answer, but. Um, my first question is, in your review of the Rowe notes. How do the methods employed by Mr. Rowe to determine flow compare to modern methods of measuring flow?
Well, he, he relied on, uh, the use of, of weers to quite extent, which are still used today. Um, they may be. Uh, instrumented more, more, in a more modern faction, but ultimately the, uh, you know, the use of a weir is, is a, is a standard approach.
Okay. Um. And did you see any reason to doubt the integrity of, uh, Mr. Rowe's data?
I didn't, uh, nothing popped out at me at all. No.
Okay. And then, is it your professional opinion, after reviewing the records, you said you reviewed, uh, in your testimony? That the springs, which were diverted by BTB and its predecessor, were tributary to Strawberry Creek?
Yes.
That's all I have.
All right, um. Does anybody else, before we circle back to Mr. Sanders, does anybody else have any cross-examination questions for Mr. Zidane? All right, go ahead. Mr. Sanders, do you want to have, do you have follow-up cross-examination questions now?
Just one moment, if you don't mind, Mr. Lilly.
Go ahead.
I don't believe we have any, any additional questions, Mr. Lilly.
All right, so we'll come back to you, Ms. Belenki. Do you have redirect questions you would like? All right, so we'll come back to you, Ms. Belenki. Do you have redirect questions you would like to ask Mr. Zidane?
If I could just have one minute.
Of course.
I just, I have just one question. If we could turn to CBD 1, page 3, line 27.
All right, we will post Exhibit CBD 1, page 3, PDF page 3, line 27, did you say?
Yes. I think so.
Okay, we have that on the screen now, please proceed.
Mr. Zidane, this sentence which you were asked to read before about, on, from page 26 to 27, about the man report.
And just so we're clear, Ms. Belenki, you said page 26 to 27, I'm sure you mean line 26.
Line 26 to 27, yes, thank you. I'm trying to formulate the question. In your review of this man letter. Well, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I can just strike that. I don't think we really have a question about this.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, then?
You know, I don't. I think that we're fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Let me just check my notes here. I've missed, oh, I was just gonna ask Ms. Mullen to leave up CBD 1, so if you can repost it. I have one question. Ms. Mullen, please scroll to PDF page 5. And down to line 13. Mr. Zidane, the sentence that begins on line 12 states, "This is described for springs in the Mojave Desert in Zidane &amp; Love", and then parentheses, "2020 Spring Flow Section" on page 7. There's no exhibit citation here, but it appears to me that this is Exhibit CBD 6, but I just wanted, can you confirm that this, the citation to Zidane and Love is in fact, that that article is in fact Exhibit CBD 6, and if you need to, we can put up Exhibit CBD 6?
Yes, it is CBD 6.
Okay, thank you. I just thought it was important to have that in the record. And that's the only question I have. So with that, Ms. Belenki, would you like to submit the CBD exhibits? I think I have 1 through 10. Would you like to offer Exhibit CBD 1 through 10 into evidence?
Yes.
And are there any objections to Exhibit CBD 1 through 10? All right, hearing done, those exhibits will be received into evidence. And Mr. Sanders, would you like to offer Exhibit BTB 41 into evidence?
I would, Mr. Lilly. And can I make one more note? I'd like for Mr. Zidane to retain his notes that he used during his testimony, and to retain any written communications that he had during the time of the testimony, including text messages, emails, et cetera.
All right, Mr. Zidane, can you do that? We've asked the other witnesses to do that. This isn't, this is the modern version of what we used to do when we were all in a hearing room together, and attorneys would have an opportunity to inspect a witness's note. So please retain the very, any documents you have that are within the scope of what Mr. Sanders just described.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So the only thing I used was my copy of my testimony. And then I didn't receive any texts or messages during that, other than our, the one-minute phone call I had with Lisa that I mentioned, so.
Okay, is your copy of your testimony marked up?
No, it's just the copy that was submitted.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't write anything down.
Okay, so, Mr. Sanders, it doesn't look like there's any documents within the scope of what, what you just described here.
I, I agree with that, and based on his acknowledgement that there are no written communications. I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'd like to move in, I'm sorry, BTB 41, please.
Are there any objections to Exhibit BTB 41 being admitted into evidence? All right, hearing done, BTB 41 is received into evidence. And with that, I think we're finished with Mr. Zidane. So, Mr. Zidane, thank you very much for testifying this morning. You can keep listening if you want, but you're excused. We do have a couple of housekeeping matters we need to take care of before we close for today.
All right, thank you.
All right, so for the attorneys going forward, I planned, I did reserve the hearing day of, of May 23rd, and I plan to go forward with that. And what I said yesterday was, I was going to ask, I was going to give Mr. Nichols an opportunity to submit rebuttal testimony, rebutting of the testimony that was presented during this round of the hearings, this rebuttal round. There were various witnesses who testified in response to Mr. Nichols' testimony in the prior round, and I said that I would give him a chance to submit, I'm just gonna call it rebuttal to that testimony. Also, and I'd proposed a 10 pages maximum for that, so. And I'm proposing that the deadline for that be May 9th. It's a little bit of a short deadline, but Mr. Nichols is obviously very familiar with the topics that we've, that have been discussed in the rebuttal phase, the rebuttal phase, and that he would respond to. So, all right, I see, Ms. Grady, your hand is up, your electronic hand, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. We would ask a couple of things with respect to the additional written testimony. Although we'd certainly endeavor to keep it at 10 pages or less, in light of the substantial quantity we're responding to, I think it was seven separate sets of testimony that addressed Mr. Nichols, and you've asked us to do point, counterpoint. In all candor, that certainly Mr. Nichols has not had opportunity to draft it yet. We would ask that you expand that to, since it's double-spaced, 20 pages, and we would endeavor to see if we could get it under 10. But in light of the volume of testimony, rebutting his testimony, and some new testimony offered by the prosecution team in particular, and others, that just seems quite tight.
Okay, I'm gonna allow 15. I think that's plenty. You don't have to, Mr. Nichols doesn't have to quote the prior testimony, he can just cite the prior testimony, so that'll only take a line or two, and then respond to each one. I, I mean, unless you, I mean, when you get into it and Mr. Nichols prepares it, if you, if you're telling me that that's just not going to be sufficient, then I'll consider something more than that. But I really want you to try to keep it to 15. I'm trying to close the loop on this. Mr. Nichols certainly doesn't have to go into any background. We've heard all that and so forth, so this is really just responding. So, I'm gonna ask for, that you, that Mr. Nichols limited to 15 pages.
I apologize. Were you continuing?
Go ahead.
The, the second issue is the timing. Mr. Nichols is an independent expert. He does not work for BTB. And he does have other clients that he is obligated to attend to. So, what you've proposed is less than two weeks for us to produce that rebuttal testimony, providing more than two weeks for everybody to review that in advance of what I anticipate will be a very short oral summary. So we would ask that you extend our period to submit to the 16th, please.
All right, I'm gonna consider that, but let me tell you what else I'm gonna do, and we'll circle back to that, and if I forget to circle back, remind me. So, Ms. Frye, are you, there you are. I have to look around. You had a chance to just, I gave you an opportunity to review this issue. Do you still want to submit any rebuttal with a new witness testifying in response to what Mr. Nichols testified to in this round about the mapping?
Yes.
All right, and, and, why don't, can you tell me, this will be a new witness, what is the name of your new witness?
Greg Allard.
Okay. And I'm going to allow that, but I think that it's a very limited topic. I'm gonna allow five pages double-spaced for that of his testimony. If, if he has to submit some other reference exhibits, you know the drill, make sure his testimony refers to the other reference exhibits, and number them all with the Frye exhibit numbering system wherever you are in the numbers. And whatever deadline we end up with, that will be the same deadline for that settlement. You all know how to upload the exhibits, and Mr. Anderson, Mr. Waldridge, Ms. Blunk, and Ms. Mullen are all listening, and I will advise them, they're very good, and they would do this anyway, but just to make sure, as soon as we, as soon as the deadline has passed, we will make sure to post those new exhibits to the AHO FTP folder, so everyone can download them.
I apologize to interrupt here, but I think it's on point.
Go ahead.
I spoke to Ms. Frye yesterday, and Mr. Allard, and it's possible that that would come in under Story of Stuff instead of Ms. Frye. She had asked that I assist, and in order to not have duplicates. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, please don't have duplicates, one or the other. But yes, if you want to submit that, coordinate with Ms. Frye, and submit that as a Story of Stuff exhibit, that's fine. Just use the Story of Stuff exhibit numbering that we are, and keep going. Whatever, wherever you ended up, start with the next number. So, yes, but that is fine, same page limit, same deadline, but it can be a Story of Stuff exhibit, yes. All right, Mr. Ms., is that it for you, Ms. Doty, Doty right now?
That's all, that's all I have.
All right, take down your electronic hand then, please. And Mr. Lowe, your electronic hand is up, please go ahead.
I, I understand that you don't want to have rebuttal of rebuttal of rebuttal of rebuttal back and forth forever. And so, I understand that after Mr. Nichols does his response to all of us, there won't be another chance to rebut that, but will we get a chance to at least cross him on what he presents that day?
Oh, there'll definitely be an opportunity for cross-examination, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Mr. Petroselli, your hand is up. We've got a lot of questions here, go ahead. Good morning.
I, I think if, I, I believe part of, we, there is a desire to ensure that Mr. Nichols' rebuttal to the testimony in this phase is very, is very focused and succinct. For that reason, I thought your initially proposed 10-page double-spaced limit was adequate, but I would ask especially that you retain the 10-page limit if you are going to extend their submission deadline, because the parties will have, you know, less time to review whatever testimony he submits.
Right, well, I don't, I don't agree, I mean, Mr. Mr. Petroselli, I'm not gonna do that. I mean, you'll still have seven days to read a 15-page document, that's not, you can do that. That's not gonna be a problem. And I understand you have to not just read it, but prepare cross-examination questions, but you may do that. And I, I think, I think 15 is a reasonable compromise between 10 and 20. It's sort of halfway in between. So, Ms. Frye, your, your hand is up, your electronic hand is up, go ahead.
Right, I just have a question about, so we're gonna, the hearing will take place again on May 23rd, and how many days, because I have some conflicts after that date?
I'm hoping that it will take place only on, that we'll finish it on May 23rd. I don't, I don't know that I can guarantee that. But we have, right now, we, well, I'm not finished yet, but we'll see. I, if we have to keep going, I plan to keep going after that. What, is your conflict all day on the 24th?
It's all, the 25th and 26th.
Oh, not the 24th?
Not the 24th, so if it goes a day over, I, I'm okay. I just wanted to, you know.
It's pretty, there, there are no promises with hearings, but I, I'm pretty confident May 23rd and 24th will be sufficient for this.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Grady, your hand is back up, go ahead.
Thank you. The third thing I wanted to mention is that we, in response to the state's testimony, we had proffered a impeachment exhibit, and we would also like to proffer in the next round, what I expect will be a one-page declaration to lay a foundation for that document, and that would have that witness available if needed.
Okay, that, and that's fine. I assume that can be similar to the declaration Ms. Doty submitted to authenticate her exhibits.
Correct.
Is that correct? Yeah, I, I, I'm trying to keep some limit on this, but, but there was an objection to the authenticity of that exhibit, so I think that is, that is appropriate. Let me make a note of that. Can you tell me the name of the person, just so I can start writing some things down here and put them in an order?
I don't recall at the moment, but I, I believe it's the author of the document.
Okay, then that's to authenticate BTB, was that 40? I think it was 40.
40.
40, all right. All right, so the last thing, and, and that is fine. I, I won't put a page limit on, well, I will put a page limit on that. Can you do that in one page? That's what Ms. Doty did with her declaration.
Yes.
I'll put two pages, but that, I mean, basically, it's, here I am, I know this is the document, it's it, that's all you need to say. All right, so the last thing I have is, Ms. Grady raised the question yesterday that if Mr. Allard, we didn't know his name yesterday, but that's who the person now is, does some testimony, it's possible that Mr. Nichols may want to respond to that, and I'm, I'm, you know, I don't want to go back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, but this was something where Mr. Nichols submitted the testimony for this round on the mapping standards, and Mr. Allard will be presumably submitting some response regarding the USGS mapping standards, so if necessary, Mr. Nichols may submit a very short response to Mr. Allard, and that's, this is why I'd set the 6th, the 9th, so we'd have time for this back and forth, but if that comes in on the 16th, I'm just gonna ask that Mr. Nichols can prepare his response, but needs to file that before the 19th. I realize it's gonna be short, but that's what we're gonna have to do, so that we can have him testify as to that on the 23rd and 24th, too. I really, unless something unexpected comes up, I want this hearing to be over on May 24th, because we, for a variety of reasons. Number one, we've had a lot of hearing days, I think we've covered everything, and I think we've gotten in all the relevant, all the evidence I'm aware of that's relevant with, with what we will get in the next round. And also, if we start getting into the summer season, it's gonna be even harder to get around schedules with this many parties, so I really am hoping we can do this. Plus, as I said, I think back a year ago, or nine months ago, when we started this, the board has told me to try to get things done in my office, and that means I have to finish hearings to get things done. So anyway, that's my plan. I'm gonna say five pages maximum for Mr. Nichols to respond to Mr. Allard, if necessary. I, I mean, frankly, I'm not sure it is. I, I think we're gonna start to have a pretty good idea, I mean, I already have a pretty good idea of how GS I mean, I already have a pretty good idea of how G S maps were prepared back in 1905, and they did, I'll just say, very well considering the resources they have now. Uh, in case any of you had forgotten, the Wright brothers flew the first airplane in 1903, and I'm pretty sure the G S was not using airplanes for its surveys in 1905, so with the technological limitations they had, they did pretty well. I think you've all pointed out that those limitations and so forth, and I think we can wrap that one up as well, and then we should be done with everything we need to, to basically close the hearing. So Ms. Frye, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure, like, a curriculum vitae could be a se- a, a separate exhibit, not part of that five pages, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that, that's what I said, a limited number of ancillary exhibits will be fine, and yes, and please do, ju- just the way the other witnesses have. Um, that, that certainly is helpful, we, certainly for expert opinion, we'd like to know other persons' education and experience. So anyway, I'm gonna try to put this all into a ruling, uh, but what I've written down is May 16 is the deadline for Mr. Nichols rebuttal to, um, the various people who testified, um, regarding his prior testimony, a 15-page maximum for that. Mr. Allard also, his written testimony, written, proposed testimony will be due on May 16 with a five-page limit. Um, and the authentication exhibit for B T B 40 will also be due on May 16 with a two-page limit. Um, and then, May 19, if, if Mr. Nichols wants to, um, obviously in consultation with counsel, um, submit a response to what Mr. Allard submits, and then we should have everything in writing as written proposed testimony, and we can proceed as scheduled on May 23rd at 9:00 a.m. with the witnesses basically confirming that this is in fact their testimony, very, very briefly summarizing it and it being available for cross-examination, and I, I, I think we should be able to finish in one day, but we will schedule it for two if necessary. And then, after that, I will issue an order regarding closing briefs, and as I said before, subsequent objections to hearsay exhibits. So, that is my plan. Is there anything else anybody wants me to cover today before we sign off? Mr. Petroselli, go ahead.
So for me, sick, for, uh, evidence submissions, excuse, or rather, for exhibit submissions, you always have a time of day. Um, have you specified a time of day, or did I miss that?
I haven't, because I haven't issued the written order yet, but I'm gonna specify 1:00 p.m. Day 16 and May, thank you, I think I would have remembered to put that in. It's going to be 1:00 p.m. Um, I, I'll just, I'm gonna tell you a little story, and you can also talk later and say I ramble too much. I do not like 12:00 p.m. because I never know whether that means noon or midnight, so I don't use that. Um, so, on the other hand, my staff has advised me, they really don't like 4:00 p.m. or later, because they have to spend some time moving everything over from one folder to another, and we like to get it done the same day so that all of you have time to download. And of course, then, that gives you time that same day to start downloading and reviewing the exhibit. So that, just in case you were wondering, that's why we use 1:00 p.m. normally. So thank you, Mr. Petroselli, that was a good question. Anything else for today? I'm gonna try to hammer out that order and get it out on my email to all of you uh, today if I can, just so you all have it, but I think the dates are all fairly clear, and the, the next two days of hearing. So, does anybody have anything else for today? All right, then it looks like I will see you on May 23rd. I hope everybody has pleasant times in the meantime. We finished before minutes, so enjoy your lunch break, and everybody have a good day. Goodbye.
Thank you.